Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order today being our budget review. We are starting at about 5:13. And I'd like to start the meeting off, if everybody could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. We have the flag in the back here. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
(inaudible) Which stands? One nation, one liberty, justice.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Murtagh in a moment, but I did want to speak for a couple of minutes regarding the early retirement incentive program. I've spoken about this a couple of times, that something that we were going to look into, both on the education side of our budget, but also the other city departments as well. And we will only be moving forward with the proposal for units A and unit B on the education side of the budget. But we will be putting a proposal together. I am going to be presenting it first to our unit A and unit B unions for their review and their thoughts. But it is going to be a proposal that we're going to make to offer to unit A and unit B employees who have over 20 and 30 years of service time to the city. Now, I want to be very clear that communities, cities and towns cannot offer years or age as a retirement incentive, only money. That's the only opportunity that cities and towns have. Years can only be done through the state retirement system, the public employees retirement system through the state and the teachers' union. We, as a city, have the opportunity to present a financial benefit, to see if that would work for a potential employee. And that'll be presented in the very near future. I'd like to present that, hoping to present that tomorrow to our unions, to get their review beforehand, which I think is the right thing to do. But again, that is only for unit A, unit B. It's not a citywide program. It will only be offered here for our education, our school system. And again, it is not years or age-related in any way. It is only financial, and it might work for some teachers, it might not, but we want to present that as an opportunity or an option. With that, Ms. Murtagh, I know there's a great deal of requests made, and I know you've put together a lot of information, so I'll turn it over to you, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How I'd like to start tonight is to go over currently where we're at, where we stopped last time, and where we're starting this time.
Motion to receive.
Okay. This is a review of some reductions from the first couple of, the first few meetings we've had. Motion to receive was made by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mr. Anotis. All in favor of receipt? That's a vote.
Can't give you a minute to review, but the revenue increases, the reductions of some Mobimax and TestWiz, the accountable units that we went through last time, accountable unit 17, which is special education, and accountable unit 10, which is the high school, the vocational director, the substitutes from the latter pot of the school here at PB D High School, one high school teacher, and in accountable unit 17, we moved some contracted services. We took $25,000 out and hoping that our grant can cover that. And so, right now, we're at $352,966. That's where we currently are at tonight. I just want to print out list A and list B, just in case you don't have them, just so we're up to date.
Motion to receive.
That's A.
Seconded.
This is list B. These are documents that you had. We made them a little bit bigger so you could see them a little bit better, but that, this is what we've been currently working off of.
Okay. We've been presented tonight with list A and list B, updated lists. Motion to receive by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia.
Thanks.
All in favor of receipt? That's a unanimous vote. That's approved.
Okay. Great. Okay. Next, I would like to go to, I think I'd like to look at three accountable units tonight, and I'd like to work through those, and then we'll go through some of the questions that we had from last time. But I'd like to look at accountable unit 16, which is athletics, because we had questions on the athletic fees. And Mr. Buah is here this evening with us, just in case we have any questions.
All right. We've been presented with accountable unit 16, athletics, update. Motion to receive by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Coffinder. All in favor of receipt?
Okay.
It's a vote.
So, we'll go through this accountable unit. And Mr. Buah, I did see him somewhere. Oh, come on down, Mr. Buah. So, just a reminder, the front page is an overall summary, and the back pages are all the detail. So, we have Mr. Buah, the athletic director, our coaches, our teachers at the elementary level at PE and health are there. We also have athletic clerical, maintenance and custodial, game staff, police details, and our athletic offset. A big piece, Mr. Buah, is here to talk about contractual services, as we had questions last time at our last meeting. Equipment, and we feel as though, in that line item, we can reduce by $4,500, and we'll explain why. Transportation, dues and fees, athletic insurance, supplies, materials and supplies, elementary health supplies, insurance, the athletic trainer, and the offset with the gate receipts. So, one of the big questions that we had last time in our last meeting was the sports reconditioning, which is called contracted services. So, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Buah, if I could, so he can explain contracted services.
On the topic, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, just before you get into that, can you just highlight the changes between this handout and the handout that we received in the original binder?
The, one of the big changes, not too, too many changes here, Mr. Hockman. If you look under contracted services, equipment, it's 16010 is the line. That's going to be 52.5 instead of 5,500. We're going to take $4,500 out of there. And you'll-
Increase in revenue that they voted for athletic fees.
Want to talk longer so they can hear?
We also have the increase in athletic user fees that you voted last week.
In the offset line?
At the top, yeah, under salary side.
And one change that you may see, that we figured out, with the line number 16015 and 16016, $2,000 of the supplies go to middle school, high school, and $3,000 to elementary health supplies. So, those are put in there, and that's why they're split with the $5,000. Mr. Buah, do you want to explain the contracted services?
Sure. So, with the contracted services line, we kind of break it up into four kind of categories to kind of figure out how we're going to kind of allocate that money. One of it is reconditioning, one is officials, one is rentals, and one is field maintenance. And kind of, kind of working through that, the MIA kind of sets our official fees per sport at the varsity and subvarsity level, and that's kind of reflected in here of what we kind of pay out for officials per sport at the freshman JV or varsity level. Rentals, things like ice time for the boys and girls, ice hockey team, porta potties for the stadium, as well as the softball field, gymnastics facility that we rent out for home meets at Yellow Jackets, as well as storage units for softball that we have at the, at the field to hold equipment and stuff like that, because they don't have anything there to kind of hold their, their equipment. Field maintenance, that we kind of try to allocate that money, things like scoreboard, you know, Enterprises comes out and does a thing if there's issues with the scoreboard. Also, sorry, laser lines is something that we use to paint the lines on the, on the turf field for lacrosse, to make sure those kind of are, are kept each season. Island lighting, that the towers up at the upper fields is the company that we've kind of used, and we, you know, it's so old, it's cost a lot of money to kind of try to maintain those and kind of keep those up. New England Fitness, New England Facilities, things that we kind of use is to kind of maintain the turf maintenance, things like that, that is kind of all that money is kind of allocated, field maintenance, paint, to paint the upper fields, whether it's the practice field, whether it's the upper fields for soccer or lacrosse, depending on, on the season. And then reconditioning is money that goes towards reconditioning of equipment, as well as uniforms. Sports like football, baseball, softball, ice hockey, boys and girls, the uniforms taken beating over the season, those are sent out to be cleaned, reconditioned. You know, football equipment, hockey equipment that is sent out to be reconditioned after every single season, and that's where that, that money is kind of allocated, kind of used for.
Any questions for Mr. Buah? Mrs. Dunn?
Actually, it's, it's not for Mr. Buah. We have our update here, and I can't, I can't understand what has changed to increase the grand total on, on, on the page. If you look at the current, the update we were just given, the FY '20 level service budget, the figure is 1151354. The one in our book is 1119543. And the FTEs have gone from 6.4 to 7.3. So, something has shifted, but if you could tell us what that is before we start, no, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Buah, but if we can have that before we start talking, it might help with some of the discussion.
Looks like $6,516,300.
Yeah, it looks like a position has been-
So, I can speak to that?
Yep.
The elementary PE and health, that is the, put in there, it's like 4.8 now because of the department head. At the elementary, we have a department head for K-5, and we have a department head for 612. So, that's in that line.
So, that's in here now, but it wasn't in here previously?
It's in here, right, because it's 4.3 to 3.9, and on this one, it is 4.6. Oh, it's right there, 4.6. No, that's 4.8.
4.8.
4.3 to 4.8, Miss Dunn, in the new one. Do you see that? 16003 in the new form, and then it's the third one down in the old one.
Yeah, it's in, it's in both of my papers.
In the old one, do you have 4.3, and then 3.9?
They have 3.9.
And then in the new one?
Oh, I see, 4.8.
Do you have 4.3 and 4.8? That's the FTE of the department head.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Buah? Mr. Hockman?
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Buah, just looking through some of the contractual services line, the, that's brought forward in this budget, I'm just looking at, I'll start out with rentals. Small ticket item, storage unit for softball equipment. Is it possible to put the softball equipment inside the Kylie? That's where the softball field is, and it's a wholly empty building. It's only $750, but is that something that's feasible and practical for the softball team?
I'm not sure if the kind of building that we would have access to open and unlocked for the team to get it when they need to be able to get in and get the equipment and stuff like that.
But to the extent that there would be access, would that be a viable solution?
To be honest, I'm, I'm not sure what, what it would look like in there. I mean, if we keep the, like, the chalk and the speedy ride and all that stuff, it's also kind of kept in there. I'm not sure what would be what we kept in that school.
The, actually, not directed to Mr. Buah, but maybe to Ms. Murtagh, Superintendent Murtagh. Do we have any custodial services at the Kylie any longer?
No.
So, couldn't use the restrooms at the Kylie?
Correct.
Okay. The ice time for, back to Mr. Buah, ice time for the boys and girls hockey is $49,305 for the FY 1920 budget. Do you know how many students, student athletes we have playing boys and girls hockey?
Right now, if we have about 13 returning boys' ice hockey players and PB D girls' ice hockey players, I believe it would be, I think the number coming, or number coming in next year would be two or three from PB D. But we co-op with Linfield and North Reading on that, so they would also, we would have it off the field, the entire team.
Sure. And they, and that's been a successful cooperative program, so thank you for your hard work on that. Do the North Reading and Linfield girls' hockey players pay user fees to PB D, or how does that, how does that work in terms, if we're paying the ice time?
They, they do not. They pay their own user fees. We, we bill them a cost kind of per pupil breakdown of what it costs to run the, to run the program. So, we, we charge kind of a per player fee right now for, for that. So, we take the cost, what it costs to run the program, plus any ice time, and then we, we bill them for that.
So, it's similar to what we do at middle school, kind of thing? We look at the total cost-
Yes.
...by the number of players, and that becomes the quote-unquote user fee or athletic fee for that program?
Correct.
Okay. And do you have that information? Do you know what we bill to the Linfield and North Reading girl hockey players?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't, but I do, I do have that information. I could, I could get to Ms. Murtagh.
And I think we, in an earlier budget meeting, increased the athletic fee $175?
Correct.
I'd say it's fair to say that the fee that the Linfield and the North Reading girls' hockey players are paying is considerably more than that.
I would, yes. I mean, I know they pay their user fees, and what their user fees are for school, I don't, I don't have that information in front of me, but I know they pay their user fees and, you know, and then, you know, and I know, and I believe North Reading kind of covered a little bit more, but I think a couple years ago, North Reading's get paid, it came out of their money, but they paid to play hockey here, but that's changed.
Okay. And then, getting back to the reconditioning of athletic equipment-
Sure.
-we allocate $50,000, and you mentioned that that was for uniforms and jerseys, football equipment, ice hockey equipment, and, you know, safety things for our kids, which is important. Would you be able to, and I don't expect you to have this today, but would you be able to give me a breakdown, or give us a breakdown, as to how much of the reconditioning of athletic equipment is attributable to hockey?
Yeah, I'm sure I could pull that information together.
And then, with regard to gymnastics, we pay, you said it was Yellow Jackets and Middleton?
Yes. Danz.
Danz, I'm sorry. Are we not capable of having, or do we have gymnastics equipment that we could put in our field house for a meet?
We do, but a lot of our, our stuff that we have is good for practice, but is not suitable, would not be suitable space for, to run, to be able to run a meet.
And then, I might have not heard you, and if you did, maybe you didn't, talk about the rentals for the fall stadium and the spring stadium.
It's the, it's the porta potties that are at the, at the facility for, you know, for whatever, that's a different place there.
Okay. And the official, the fees for the officials are established by the MIAA for the conference or for the state?
Correct.
They're uniform, right? We pay what everybody else pays?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I'm good for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Any other questions for Mr. Buah and Mrs. Dunn?
Yes. On the tower lights?
Mm-hmm.
Are these portable lights at the upper field?
No. They're permanent light fixtures that are up there.
Okay. But who are we paying $5,000 to? Do you know?
I believe that the company is, is called Tower, is called Island Lighting, is the company that, that comes out and services those when, if, if need be. You know, that, that's a, again, that's a budget cost that, you know, right now, the lights are working, but they're so old, I could flip them on for a night game and not have them working, and have Tower Lighting to come out and take a look. I know last, I think last fall, they came out and did a service on it.
Okay. Could we look into that, as far as making sure that those lights are appropriate? My memory was that those lights were permanent, and I do remember there was an issue with the lights when we had the chance to put in stands for the, for the fans at baseball games. I'm not, I don't know how it is for the, the end that soccer uses, but I actually, I thought those were the same as the lights we have on the football field, and that they were, you know, maintained here at the school, just like the lights in the parking lot, so if we can find that out. That's, that's $5,000. What is New England Facilities for $8,000?
That would be, they, they service a lot of the equipment in the field house. So, if basketball, if one of the motors on the basketball hoop goes, they, that's the money that kind of costs, that's, you know, there are, what, four, six, six hoops, there's six motors, plus motors for the curtains. Everything in there is a little outdated, so it's costly to repair if things do get, you know, if things do break down. You know, I know this past fall, we had to replace the curtain, one of the curtain motors in the, in the field house, and-
Again? How old were those? Sorry. Those are only two or three years old.
How old are the curtain motors in the gymnasium? I don't know.
Yeah.
So, and I know last, last year, last school year, we had to replace a basketball motor, that kind of, so it's things like that that, that come up, that, that can be costly, and there's a lot of little things that need to get done in the field house as well, that that, that money would come from.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murtagh.
I was asked by-
I'm sorry, Mr. Hockman, do you have a question? Yeah? No, I think there was some additional information.
So, last, last meeting, I was asked to find out user fee system, a tiered system, and while we had Mr. Buah here, we did look into many different towns, surrounding towns for user fees. Mr. Buah, do you want to share those, some of the surrounding towns?
Sure. Just kind of looking at, looking at, at different communities, there's, you know, a lot of communities that do a tiered system, a lot of communities that, that just do kind of a flat fee, and, you know, those flat, there are communities that don't do user fees. A lot of our, a lot of the NEC schools that are more kind of urban schools do not have user fees at all. But there, there are schools in the area that charge, you know, $350 per sport, $250 per sport, and some goes $650 per sport. Then there are tiered systems that, you know, are 155 for certain sports, 185 for certain sports, $250 for, you know, other sports, and looking at how some of these schools kind of break that up, it's, I think they take rentals into consideration when they, when they look at, when they look at that. And there are some schools that charge a little bit more for just football and ice hockey, and have a flat fee for everything else. So, that's kind of what was kind of come across the board. Looking at it, I know we're, if not the, one of the lowest user fees in the, in the, in the region.
Do you have a handout with us?
I do not have a handout for you, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Would we be able to receive it tomorrow?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, so, Mr. Buah, through the chair, I know earlier this year, we took a vote to eliminate the gate receipt for students. I think you mentioned it was about $20,000 that we were, we weren't going to realize with gate receipts and students going for free. Is my memory about right, or do you?
Yeah, it's probably give or take, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mr. Anotis?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Mr. Buah. I just have a question under contractual services. It's actually the last one. It's architectural exam of stadium next fall, 2019, for $5,000. Could you just talk about that a little bit? Give us some information on what that is.
So, it would be an examination of the, of the bleachers and the press box up at the, up at the stadium, in a sense of, inspection is probably not the right word, but kind of, you know, are we up to code with everything, this, that, and the other, that needs to be-
So, it needs to be done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Anotis. Any other questions for Mr. Buah? Thank you. Oh, Mrs. Dunn?
Just one. Could that exam be put off, or is, is there a requirement on the time for that, the exam of the press box?
Um, I know it hasn't been done since I've been here, so I could, I don't know when the last time it's been done. Like, that's something I could look into, but it would be something that, you know, probably should be looked at, you know, at some point.
Okay. Because I know we did some upgrades when we did, when we improved the field, when we put the turf field in there, we did fix the press box. If that's something that could be delayed, I'd like to see if we could put it into a future budget. It's $5,000, but if, if, if there's no, if, if you could let us know, if there's any deadline or requirement on that, otherwise, I would like to see that put off. Thank you.
Mrs. Dunn, what's the number on that one? On the little side?
Oh, goodness, it's, I-
009.
Okay, thank you. Got it. 009. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We're going to-
Thank you, Mr. Buah.
Thank you, Mr. Buah. We're going to move into accountable unit 17, which is transportation. Oh, sorry, not 17, sorry. 20 is transportation. 17 is specialized. Ms. Conners is here tonight, too, the director of transportation.
Motion to receive.
Excuse me, second. Per the motion to receive the updated accountable unit 20 worksheet, seconded by Mr. Amico, all in favor? That's a vote.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. So, accountable unit 20. So, one big difference is the user fee, the increase in bus pass fees, that's $15,750. But as you can see, this one, I just, this one is looking good. I just wanted to make sure that we looked at this, because this is one of our, with our homeless and with our foster care, and with our spent, special education, out-of-district placements and things like that, this is a big accountable unit, so I, I felt the need for you to be able to take a look through it.
Does everyone see, this is the item that we've discussed in the past, where, because of the change in the law, we now fully pay the bill for payment of transportation for those students that are in foster care and those students that are homeless. So, that's what, now we are paying $514,000.
Motion to receive...
Per the motion to receive the updated accountable unit 20 worksheet seconded by Mr. Amico. All in favor, that's a vote.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. So accountable unit 20. So one big difference is the user fee, the increase in bus pass fees, that's $15,750. But as you can see, this one, I just, this one is looking good. I just wanted to make sure that we looked at this because this is one of our, with our homeless and with our foster care and with our spent, special education, out of district placements and things like that. This is a big accountable unit, so I felt the need for you to be able to take a look through it.
Does everyone see, this is the item that we've discussed in the past where, because of the change in the law, we now fully pay the bill for payment of transportation for those students that are in foster care and those students that are homeless. So that's what, now we are paying $514,000.
This one's very similar, you know, I can go through it if you wish. But it's the bus monitors, the crossing guards, the supervisors. Also summer bus monitors and summer school. And then the regular transportation leases are all in this accountable unit.
So I did want to ask Ms. Murtagh. The new worksheet that was provided to us, it has a total of increase of $254,198. In the worksheet that we had previously, it was 270. So is that a $16,000 savings that we could...
The year's not over yet though, but can we take that?
Yeah, right now the only change between what you had previously is the increase in bus pass fees of $15,750.
Okay, so that's the change?
That's the only change.
All right, so that's $16,000 that we could put aside. Mrs. Dunn, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yes, I just asked if we could hear what the difference between our current transportation policy is and what it would cost overall for transportation under the state mandated distances.
That was one of the questions that you had last time. Tom, do you want to speak to that? We did do some work on that, Ms. Dunn.
So what is the financial impact of reducing transportation to the legal requirement? Really, the only thing we can touch is the high school. We're not legally obligated to provide transportation to regular education students. So what that would result in? We have a handout for that?
No, we'll bring that tomorrow.
So right now we contract Healy Bus, Healy Transportation for 23 buses. So in that route in the morning, it would cut one hour off the time. So the total time savings of the 23 buses times one hour is 23 hours. And our contractual rate for next year was $24.75 per hour. So the morning savings on a daily basis would be $569.25. We don't save as much in the afternoon because of the routing and the traffic. So we would save approximately a half of an hour. So 23 times one half hour is 11 and a half hours. Times 24 and 3/4 dollars is $284.63 in the afternoon. So our total daily savings would be $853.88 times 180 days, and it's a lot here, we'll have to get you a printout. $153,697.50. But, there's always a but. The bus pass sale number that we have out of the high school is $112,750. So our net gain to not transport students is $40,947.50. Not what I expected.
I'm glad you figured that out, thank you.
Miss Connor's still working on that?
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Murtagh, I want to ask some questions about the crossing guards. Majority of them are part-time, 0.40. There's about five that are full-time. What is, why is five of them full-time? I just thought that job was all part-time.
Me too, but I can find out for you why some are 1.0, some are 1, some 0.4. I know some do, do the substitutes if they're not there, but I will find out from the sergeant why. Or detective, I'm sorry.
If you're going to bring that information back, can you also bring back how many we have that hold over? That are on call and see if we're able to reduce that number for any type of savings? I know we do have a handful that are on call, which is understandable, but I'd just like to see if there's any possibility.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Olympia?
Yep, through the chair. Ms. Murtagh, or this might be for Mr. Flor. Under transportation, leased sped equipment, is that buses?
Correct.
Correct?
They pick up two new vehicles this year.
And are those leases got a buy and purchase price or?
At least a purchase, I think it's a $1 buyout.
Yeah, $1 buyout, so we owe them after the lease. That's it for now. Thank you.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. For you to, I think Ms. Murtagh, Superintendent Murtagh. What, we have a cross and guard coordinator. I think it's line 2006. On page three of the handout, three?
Yes.
Seven, I'm sorry, thank you.
We do.
Any reason that that's not on the consideration sheet for elimination?
We can look into it, that's who coordinates everything, kind of like our substitute teachers, they do the crossing guards.
Is that something that could be absorbed by transportation or some other supervisor?
We could definitely look into that. We could.
We have, on the list that we have, we have 29 crossing guards. And I'm sure the work that's performed by this coordinator is important work, but the crossing routes are stagnant. There's a limited number of people who are working them. If someone calls out, I imagine that someone has to make a phone call to get someone else in. I don't know why that's .63 FTEs. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Connors or Superintendent Murtagh? Oh, Mr. Hockman?
While Ms. Connors is here, first of all, thank you, thank you for being here. Thank you for the work you do. It's not always rewarding, it's difficult, we know, but we appreciate it. Just a thought while you're here, a question. We did recently increase the bus user fee. Do you have any feeling as to whether or not that's going to have any impact on ridership or?
I honestly don't feel that it will impact the parents at all. We are setting up and the process is setting up also payment online, which people would have. Right now we're only cash and check, which is difficult for the people. So here we're trying to do the credit card and debit card. So I think they, and they can start, like, we're going to start very soon. So they can come down, you know, or they can do it right online and it's going to be a lot better. So I don't think they will have a problem at all, it's kind of expected.
So we can be pretty confident if people ask the words?
Thank you, Mrs. Connors.
Thank you, Mrs. Connors. The next accountable unit is 22. Which is admin, which, there's a lot of cuts in this one, so that's possible cuts.
We've been presented with an update to accountable unit 22 administration. Motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia to receive. All in favor of receipt? Unanimous in favor?
Okay. This is the admin line. So it's clerical staff, it's reserve lane changes, superintendent assistant, all the central office staff members.
Health insurance?
Health insurance. This is a big accountable unit. Some offsets. The high open low in, as you'll see, the bottom line is 22024. That is built in to the schools already, so I don't want you to be thrown off by that. Some professional development that will talk about dues and fees, contracted services. Postage, things of that nature. And you'll see a lot in the detail as you go. But I do want to pass out this sheet as well because, I should have done this first, I apologize. One, two, three. Because this will really, really help you. These are things in accountable 22, if we can go right down to the bottom and then we'll go back up. That a possible cuts as we look, again, possible reductions that we could do in this accountable unit. So I'm going to go through some of the things here that you can look in your detail. But I just thought it would be easier for you to be able to look at accountable unit 22 and see what I'm talking about. Futures. Futures was a professional development company we used last year and the year before. We no longer use it this year, so that is a savings for us. Same thing, there's another company called Future Management that we no longer use. We have not used it this year, it was used the past couple of years. Rotary membership, I'm not quite sure why that's there, but that's, I'm on Rotary. MAS C, I belong to that, but that's not the line, so that can come out. General, not necessary. Advertising, we were all talking as a team and our advertising a lot is online now. And for the necessary, we budgeted for the necessary things that we do need to post in the newspapers and everything, so we feel as though we can give money there as well. Photo associates, there was a duplicate, so we could take one off and keep one in. Professional development for people in central office, we feel as though we can give some of that up and be able to have our own professional development as well with the teams that we belong to. This superintendent mentorship was budgeted for $40,000, it's $4,000. My mentorship is $39,000, $3,900 per year, not $40,000, so that reflects there. And, oh, that's the next accountable unit is 29, but while I'm there, I'm just going to do it. In technology, there was mileage there, but it's built into those salaries already, so it was duplicated. And if you don't mind, I'm on a roll here. I'm just going to do the next couple at the top, if you don't mind. In curriculum development, Oasis, it's called Frontline. We use that and that's a duplicate. That was also found in accountable unit 22, you'll see that in here, and we found it also in 13. So we can take that out. Translations, at last meeting we took a real hard look at that and we did call some companies for automated and online. And we feel as though we can do a little bit of that, but we also need the humane side of it as well. So we're willing to split there and keep $10,000 in the budget and propose cutting $5,000. And in the accountable unit 16 in athletics, they proposed a boys volleyball team and we felt as though that could hold off for another year. In accountable unit 18, which is professional development, we no longer have to offer the SEI course as we did in the past. So Salem State Collaborative, where we belong, are offering the courses for us. And staff development other, we felt as though that could go as well. So in this whole page here and with a lot in accountable 22, we feel as though our savings could be $141,175.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Murtagh. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Murtagh, have these items already been reduced in here?
Oh, you've already reduced them.
So there's no votes on them that you need, it's already been taken out?
No, I would not vote. I would not vote. An official vote.
The, on the volleyball team, the proposed boys volleyball team, how many students were interested in that, do we know?
I don't, from Mr. Buah, I don't know.
And they're still able to join the volleyball, the current volleyball team?
Sure, yes.
I'll fold, all right, so you need a vote on all of these?
Yes.
But they've already been reduced in?
Because I wanted to show, yes.
Would this be reflective of our A and B list, that we can take some off of the A and B list?
No, this is $141,000 in new money that is being reduced.
It's additional, this is additional money.
Yeah, no, this is, this is, this $141,000 plus, I think the other 16 that was in accountable unit 20 would be $157,000 in money that's new money to be reduced, reducing the overall budget.
Based on all of the money that is being found and that we're cleaning up, I would be looking for the next meeting, new A and B lists that you're able to show that it reflects.
Yep.
There won't be a change to A and B.
This is additional.
So wouldn't that mean that we can take some of the items off of A and B because this found money? If we reduce these things?
So the reductions we have made to date were $352,000. This now is $157,000, so we've reduced slightly over $500,000.
The bus passes are on there. We've already accounted for the bus pass. We've already accounted for the bus pass revenue, so we need to skip that one. It's just the 141 here, Mara, that we're talking about now. That cumulative $352,966 includes all the revenue changes, including the bus passes.
Okay, so we're at $500,000. Mrs. Dunn?
Regarding the boys volleyball team, there's no Title IX issue at all with this, if we cut that?
I can look into that now, Mr. Buah.
Well, it doesn't exist. We don't have a...
It does not.
I know, that's why I wanted to...
There was this new thought that was being proposed.
Okay.
Yeah, but they can join our team.
Mr. Hockman?
So other than the volleyball, can we check in to see if there's a compliance issue there? I'm going to make a motion to follow the recommendation for the changes identified by Superintendent Murtagh with the exception of the boys volleyball team, which we can hold, please.
Seconding and point of information, if I may.
On the motion, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. The volleyball, Mrs. Dunn, through the chair. The boy is that I've had kids in the system with a volleyball. We have played teams and there have been boys on all of those teams. So if you're confident enough or if you still want to wait, I'll wait, but we, boys can play on those teams. And they've played them, the girls have played them.
All right, so the motion by Mr. Hockman is to follow the recommendation of the superintendent pulling, holding back the volleyball proposal. So it'll be 136,675? 136,675. All right, do I have a second? Mrs. Dunn? Mrs. Carpenter had seconded on the motion, Mrs. Dunn? No? Any thoughts or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. I do see that in the cuts or the reductions we just made, we eliminated advertising. We don't really utilize print advertising anymore. At one point, a long time ago, this committee voted to allow businesses to advertise on our print advertising that we were handing out and we no longer do that and it's difficult and for good reason. However, could we please, Ms. Murtagh, look into... However, could we please, Ms. Murtagh, look into what revenue we can generate from allowing advertising on our website? Might be some businesses in the city that are interested in promoting themselves, promoting their activities and so forth. Strange times, strange measures, I guess.
Okay. So those are the three minutes we had that I had for tonight.
Okay. Yeah, it's, yeah, Juan, you can now go to the items that, there were specific questions at the last meeting about this.
One of the questions that was brought up for us to look into is half-day kindergarten, and I got information, half-day kindergarten would be very, very difficult, and some of the classes, depending, would go up to twenty-three, twenty-four students, depending. Also, we looked into the transportation, which would be a big piece of this due to the fact that our midday runs are with preschool, most of our preschoolers, so we'd have to use Healy for our busing, because they'd be running at the same time. And they, Healy has a minimum of two hours, so that would cost us seventy-one thousand, two eighty for an approximate cost. We could reduce the number of teachers, depending on if we wanted to go right up to twenty-five students, and it would be an AM session and a PM session, depending on the school. And I will have a handout for you about that tomorrow evening for that. But I'll hold on my other, I just want to state the facts, and that's the information that we received from transportation, and we could reduce a number of teachers if we did that. Another question that was asked is legal services, and I said I would get an average over the, since two thousand and sixteen to present, and that's between, that is an average of seventy-five to seventy-eight thousand dollars per year. A question was asked about the EL teacher salary at the high school, and that is the correct salary. We double-checked that through Human Resources. The increase of Little Tanners tuition, I'm going to talk to you about that, just find my little sheet, because we had talked about increasing the McCarthy preschool. Tom, do you have that sheet?
I'll share something.
I'm sorry. I did have that. I apologize.
While you're looking, Ms. Murtagh, I'll go to you, Mr. Amico?
Thank you. Through the chair of the committee and to the superintendent, I'd like to make, I don't even know if I need to make a motion for this, but I'd like to reconsider on the kindergarten. I think that might be a last-stitch effort if we really need to do something, but I would not be in favor of making any changes to our current kindergarten program at this time.
Yeah.
I'd like to keep it as is.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. I'd say your thoughts, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote on that item.
Mr. Hockman?
Take it off the consideration?
Take it out of consideration.
Yes.
Mrs. Cappender?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, we're presented with us a document regarding the Little Tanners program and the preschool program at McCarthy School. Motion to receive by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Cappender. All in favor of receipt? That's a vote.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. LaFleur to explain.
Okay, the top section is the McCarthy rates that you looked at last week and voted to increase. I've listed the full day for nineteen, the current rates, the ones we proposed, and including the actual increase. McCarthy does have a half-a-day program, which Little Tanners does not, so I included that. The second portion is the Little Tanners here at the high school, fiscal nineteen current rates, we're proposing increasing by the same amount, two hundred and fifty dollars annually, and your fiscal twenty rate are the proposals, so seventy-two fifty, fifty-eight hundred, forty-three fifty, and twenty-nine hundred. There are twelve students in this program.
On this item, Mrs. Cappender?
Thank you. What time does Little Tanners end? What are their hours?
Seven, seven fifteen to two? Oh, thank you.
What was that?
Six forty-five to three thirty. It's not just the school day, it's extended.
And the McCarthy?
That is the school day, depending if it's full or half.
But it's half, right?
Yeah, unless it's a full or half day, and I don't know who the times off the topic. My head, I will get those.
Arrow?
Do you know?
They start, yes, they start at eight fifty, the first session, eight fifty to eleven fifteen, they get out, and the second session starts at twelve o'clock, and then it ends at two twenty-five.
Thank you.
But there is the option at the McCarthy to stay full day?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cappender. Mrs. Dunn?
Could you tell, there are twelve at Little Tanners, how many are there at the McCarthy preschool? Do we have that number as well?
That's a pretty number, one, one forty?
One forty?
I think it's one forty, at least, with, yeah, with the waiting list, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Dunn, if you're okay, I'll go to Mrs. Cappender. Yep.
Is there room for more, or is there license just for ten kids or twelve kids? Do you know?
I believe it's twelve.
Twelve with the para.
Twelve with a para.
And generally, that's staff that utilizes that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So it's just twelve? Thank you.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. And are you, the Little Tanners proposed increase, is that already built into anything we voted on?
No.
No?
That would be an additional.
What would be the projected, do you have a projection on revenue?
Well, this is difficult.
It's a maximum three thousand if she's full.
For Little Tanners?
Correct.
And we've already factored in the McCarthy School?
Correct.
Mr. Olympia?
Through the chair, Mr. LaFleur, under, the administration under the Medicare taxes, total salaries, fifty-four million, is that?
For the entire district.
Entire, okay.
Not just the district. Yeah.
Boy, I was hoping that was wrong.
Accountable Unit twenty-two encompasses a lot.
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Cappender?
What about Passos?
Passos, that's something I can look into. I talked to Joanne Pantapis, and she's more than willing, if that's what you want us to do as well.
Do you know what their current rates are?
I can tell you after the break, because I have them.
Okay.
Yeah. They're in here.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
And if the, I know, well, students that attend, children that attend the McCarthy, if they're eligible, they were able to receive a voucher to cover the cost of tuition. Is that, is that also true for the Little Tanners? Do we have any?
No, I don't have the answer for you. I am sure it's the same.
I'm inclined to treat this equally across the board. It's not a lot of revenue in terms of what we're going to get, but it's, I'm going to make a motion to increase the tuition for Little Tanners at two hundred and fifty dollars per student, so...
Per the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappender?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
I don't have to pass, I have to read it. I do have that information on Passos, it just happened to be right here. So this is, tuition is determined by family size and income in accordance with Massachusetts Sliding Scale for Childcare. Tuition rates range from a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and seventy-five dollars per week. Hours are seven thirty to four thirty at Passos West. Now remember, there's Passos West, Passos South. So it's seven thirty to four thirty, one thirty-five to one seventy-five per week. For Passos South, tuition is determined by family size and income in accordance with Massachusetts Sliding Scale for Childcare. Tuition rates from a hundred and five to one forty-five per week. Hours are from eight thirty to three o'clock. Extended days available from seven to four thirty PM for ten dollars or fifty dollars per week.
Through the chair, so...
Yes, please, Mrs. Capp.
The, the amount that is charged at Passos is income-eligible? Is this a contract with EEC? So it's the state, the median factor and all of that? There's no adjustment on those then?
So then we can come up now.
It's all income-eligible?
It's, right here, it says, "Family size and income in accordance with Massachusetts Sliding Scale for Childcare."
So we don't hold any private spots? It's all through that?
I'll find out for you, but I believe, Mrs. Pandepas will let you know.
Yeah, please.
I will find out.
Thank you.
Okay, got it? You're good? Okay, going down our list here. We did the minimum budget for transportation, and we did the sports reconditioning, and that's all going to be under contracted services now. We were confused with reconditioning and all of that. It will all be contracted services in, as we continue. And we did the tiered fees for athletics. So that, that was our list.
We received that.
You will receive it tomorrow night, but we talked about it.
Mr. Arnotis?
Thank you. I just know, I know we were talking about transportation a short while ago, and we're talking about going up on some of the fees, and we've already gone up on the bus fees. What, if any, is there a free fee for the people who drive to school here at the high school and pay to park in our parking lot? If I recall, like, you used to have to pay for a sticker, and there was a parking pass on your car, and you had to renew that. Can we look into that?
We can look into it. Mr. Buckley was here, but he's down at the award ceremony right now, but I'm not...
I mean, to me, it would...
I should know that, and I don't know that.
It would be leveled, I mean, if we're going up on bus...
Like the parking pass?
Parking pass, yeah.
Parking pass, yeah. But let me look into that, because I don't think we do now. I don't think that, no.
There's no fee?
There's no fee to students that park?
No.
Well, then I think that's something we should certainly look at, especially if we're going to go up on the bus fees, and when we're looking for money everywhere we can here, it's worth having a conversation about. I mean, I know it, you know...
We did have one, a while back, so I'll look to see what we charged, if we can find it.
I can tell you from any college, you know, that is in existence now, it's hundreds of dollars, these parking pass fees, and I'd love to know what other high schools charge right now, I'm sure they do, so it's worth looking at.
One hundred and eighty dollars at Essex North Shore.
Really? So there we go. I mean, if we're wanting to be on par with other districts.
All right, I know we have the academic awards at six thirty, I know we wanted to attend. Do we want to break with the intention of coming back following the academic awards to continue discussions? I'll leave it up to the committee members.
Does Ms. Murtagh have more handouts or any additional money that she's found?
I wish. That's what I have to date, I actually finished up, and then we were going to go back to List A, List B. So that's where I am tonight.
And we're meeting again tomorrow night?
We're meeting tomorrow night, yes.
We have school tomorrow night.
It's five thirty tomorrow night at the Higgins.
I want on the academic awards.
About an hour, I figure.
My vote would be to reconvene, and let's start looking at this list tonight.
Reconvene at seven thirty.
All right, so we'll break now with the intention to reconvene at seven thirty, or approximately seven thirty following the academic awards night, and to continue the review. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call the regular school committee back in order. We took a break to go watch the academic awards, which was a wonderful night to see our students on it for incredible academic achievement. We wanted to come back and continue the discussion. I'm proposing that we meet for approximately maybe another hour, and we have meeting schedules for tomorrow and Wednesday if necessary, but I know there's a number of items presented by Ms. Murtagh, some information that she was able to obtain pursuant to questions that were asked of her and requests from the last meeting, and I know we're going to continue the discussion now. I know we have List A, List B to discuss, other, any other items brought up certainly available for discussion, but I'm proposing we go for maybe another hour, maybe till about eight thirty, then break till tomorrow night. That's acceptable to everyone? So again, a proposal, proposing a four-point-one percent increase to the budget, which is three million dollar increase, but still some difficult topics to discuss, difficult decisions need to be made in order to meet that number. Ms. Murtagh's presented us with the List A and the List B for discussion. I'll open that up now.
Question?
Yes, Mrs. Cappender?
Thank you. One of the items that was discussed was foreign language, and I believe we got a list of all of the languages, each level, enrollment, potential enrollment, and I think the question to Ms. Murtagh was, well, the concern I have is that some students need that second or third language they've already been involved with, that they need it for college, and just ensuring that they would still be able to fulfill that, and we were speaking in regards to how, if we cut some of the languages that had the lower enrollment, how we could still help those students fulfill their requirements that college usually asks for.
So we did some work on this, Ms. Cappender, and Latin and German, we looked at the online component to see if we could get some online assistance with that as well. Edgenuity is our online component that we use throughout the district, and that we have thirty licenses for at the high school, and Latin one and Latin two are offered, German, German one and German two, and Greek, unfortunately, Edgenuity does not offer Greek. So we did look into that, because that was a question that you had had for me, and that's what they offer through Edgenuity, but that's what we have for the online component. I can run through two of how many requests we had again, if you need that.
I still have them in front of me. I have a question, though. Was there any offer for that online component if the Latin and German were cut for Latin three or German three?
They just offered Latin one and two. We asked.
The RISDum?
No.
That's it?
And zero request for Latin three.
Zero?
Zero.
Maybe I wrote this down wrong, I thought I had, I thought I wrote down two.
Well, Dr. Lord's going to double-check for us.
Latin three, I have zero courses, courses, course requests.
Okay.
We have healthy French, Spanish, Portuguese, and Italian courses being offered.
What about Germany?
Zero, zero.
Three.
German three?
German three is two kids. German three, there are three students. German four, there are two requests.
So do we have any alternatives for those students?
Right now, we're hoping Edgenuity had it, but they did not have it.
Is that, is that a situation where, like, you can have the, like, a co, you know, have some of the kids in there, and the, and the German teachers teaching to the one or the two, and then they, they kind of go over to the three?
Combination classes.
So they could, so could we do that, so they could still get their requirement of the three that they're looking for?
We can look into it, but that's a challenge. We can definitely look into it, it is a challenge. We can look into that. Five students, it's a combo.
Thanks, Ms. Cough. This is done.
So may I ask, how many teachers in the foreign language department are you looking to cut?
Currently, in more language, we have nine point six, which will be ten teachers. And we're looking perhaps to cut one, it's not a, it's not a, we need another ELL teacher, because we went from sixty-eight to eighty-eight students. But currently, we have ten, nine point six with the department head.
And we have some of these, now, okay, I'm looking at German. We obviously do not have a teacher teaching German seven times a day. We have someone teaching German once a day, and everybody's in one classroom. Correct?
We, right, we have eight requests, we have twenty-four requests for German one, eight requests for German two, and three requests for German three.
Okay. And I have three for four for next year, but you're saying it's two, Dr. Lord?
Two, yep.
Okay. All right. So right now, we have one teacher teaching German once a day. Italian, how many Italian teachers do we have?
Italian, one. We have one Italian teacher.
Yeah, one Italian teacher. So right now, there's one Italian teacher. What's happening right now in Latin is all of the students are currently in a single class of Latin one, two, and three, all together, there's a total of nine students there. That's what's happening right now, one class of Latin. And what was the other question you had?
How many, all right, so we have one Italian teacher, one, one class.
One Italian teacher has a full schedule of five classes right now.
For Italian?
Yep. And there's a single class of Latin, has three different levels in it.
Right. Okay. And then we have a teacher teaching Greek, one period a day?
Oh, there's two classes of Greek, one is Greek one, and another one's a combination of two, three, and four altogether in one room.
And that's covered by one teacher?
One period of one teacher, well, two periods of one teacher, Greek.
Okay. And then, Spanish, how many teachers do we have teaching Spanish?
Right now, there are seven, fifteen, eleven, thirteen. A lot of sections in Spanish. Fifteen, twenty-five, twenty-eight sections of Spanish, I'm sorry, twenty-nine sections of Spanish ranging from Spanish one to Spanish five orders, that's right now.
Okay. Do we know how many, how many teachers are teaching those?
We, I don't. There's, there's ten teachers total, there's probably four or five that are covering Spanish.
Okay, and same for Portuguese?
Portuguese has one teacher teaching, all five of their classes are Portuguese.
So that teacher has one?
That's a full schedule for that teacher here, right now.
And then, how many French teachers?
There's probably one, but again, there's, there's four classes being taught for French. So that French teacher must be doing four classes of one, and then one class of something different.
Because some of our foreign language teachers are teaching two languages.
Right, they can teach twenty percent of their content.
They can teach one class out of their content.
Right. So we have a French teacher teaching Latin, which is fine. We have a German teacher teaching two classes of German? Okay, so that's the same person teaching German and Portuguese. How do they do that?
They'd have to look back, get you the names, but I don't know exactly who's teaching those particular classes.
And then, my understanding is we have an English teacher teaching Greek?
Yes, I believe so. Oh, is Mr. Buckley, he was, he was here earlier?
Yeah, he doesn't really have exact names.
So, the cut to foreign language, depending on which person gets cut, depends upon which language is going to get cut. Because if we have people who are teaching other courses, we are not necessarily going to cut that, that teacher's duties.
Right, they did not put a foreign language teacher on list A or B right yet, because we're watching the requests. So that's why it's not only I have it yet.
Thank you, just wanted to try to understand this.
But we are looking at numbers of students who have requested those courses of Latin, Greek, and German.
Oh, no, I understand, and you do have to do that. I also have a question, because, you know, looking at the numbers in German, in the German classes, I remember this was quite a controversy when we cut the German teacher at the Higgins. And we were concerned, this was a few years ago, and I'm wondering if this is, this is the result of, we've talked before about the feeder groups. When you cut a language at the lower level, it does impact on the choices students make at the high school level. And what is the plan for our foreign language department throughout the district? Is there one, depending on the cuts? Because we want to cut French at the Higgins level, that's the first time the students get exposed to the foreign languages. Now, if we cut that language at the middle school, then what happens here at the high school?
Well, we, of course, would like to offer as many languages as we possibly can, but we're obviously going toward, leaning towards the languages that are most popular at this time, especially where we're, we're in this budget, increase in budget, so we have to reduce somewhere. And unfortunately, we're looking at the tallies and request of students that, what they really want, and that's what we have, the numbers in front of us. And that's what we're basing our, obviously, we want to expose students to as much as we possibly can, that's why we're a comprehensive high school, and I, I want to say we're a comprehensive school system. We offer a lot more than a lot of other districts do. So that's why I think some of these reductions are on here, unfortunately.
Our school has been recognized for providing such a rich foreign language department out of all of the high schools in Massachusetts. It is number one with the, with the rich exposure, which begins in the middle school as well. And it's an honor that, that they deserve, and it's really always been a great tribute to PBD because of the fact that we embrace the immigrants and the people who built this community and want to preserve those languages and allow students to participate in them. My understanding also is that the ELL students who are able to choose a foreign language, they don't choose the language of their home, family, but they are very versatile, and very, very good students in the foreign languages. And if we decide to limit that, we're limiting them as well. It's an area where they, they're starting off with everybody else. They go into a class, and they don't know the language just like the other kids, and it's, it's very, very beneficial to them. So any cuts to the program, including the one at Higgins, really, really concerns me, and especially looking at the numbers in the, in the upper grades, understanding that the cuts below definitely lead to a deficit. And truthfully, if we were to do what we really should be doing, we should be having elementary students learning foreign languages. And I'm certainly not going to bring that up right now, but I'll bring it up every year, because educationally, that's the way we should be going.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. Before I, we have a series of motions that I'm prepared to make. Did we get any response regarding the crossing guards that was asked of earlier, I know it's only an hour ago?
Yes, we actually did, and, Mr. Farrell, can you, can you, what you got for a thing?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the one FTEs, there are three of them there, I believe, they are called down to police stations where they meet, and they are used either as substitutes for people calling out, or they are used to go out and make sure everybody's where they're supposed to be, following procedure, and/or running, doing other procedures. They only have three for coverage for the entire district, four, I'm sorry. And, you know, they're very much needed at this point in time, according to the supervisor.
Okay. And so, we, we, whether we know it or not, we have crossing guards that, that stand on corners and cross pupils and students across dangerous roadways, and, and then we have crossing guards that work at the, not on a corner, but as Mr. Farrell just briefly described, work at the police station, or just go to the police station and fill in for crossing guards that aren't able to make it to work for any particular reason, and, and do other tasks. I, I get that. From looking at cutting library professionals, and I'm looking at cutting reading specialists, I think I need to take a look at the additional crossing guards. The crossing guards that aren't on corners, walking, walking kids across the street, stopping traffic, making sure they, they cross safely. And out of the twenty-nine, there are four who are one point zero FTE. I think those are the four that Mr. Farrell just described. You know, four, and, and I don't know how they're going to bump, and what their bargaining rates are, and they'll work all that out, but four FTEs within this unit comes to fifty-six thousand dollars. I'm going to make a motion to reduce crossing guards by four FTEs.
Further motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. For discussion, Mrs. Cough?
Thank you. I, I definitely understand where Mr. Hockman's coming from, this is, you know, where my questions were leading to. So a couple of things that I need to be sure of before I move forward on a vote on this. The four full-time FTEs, they are the ones who are the backup that stay in the police station, waiting to be called?
Yeah, they go in, and then they're not callers, the substitute fill in, they patrol to make sure everybody's where they're supposed to be.
Okay. The crossing guard coordinator? Is, is, is he used as a backup as well?
Can be.
He can be?
Yeah.
So he's on standby at the police station as well?
I, I don't have that information.
Okay, okay. So if we cut the four backups that are at the police station, because we've discussed this before, the concern has been, if somebody calls out sick, who fills that spot? So cutting all four may not be the best idea, so I may not be in favor of the motion of all four. I need to have some type of backup so that we always have a street, a crosswalk covered. I'll yield to the rest of the committees to, to talk, and then maybe ask for a, a little bit of a change.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Cough. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, just to respond to that, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Ms. Cough, that we need coverage on corners, but we don't keep ten teachers sitting in the melting pot all day in case we need a substitute. We have substitutes that we call in on a daily basis, and I don't see any reason to treat the crossing guards at this point, under these circumstances, any differently. So I, I'm not suggesting that we go without substitute crossing guards. I think we go with treating the, the manner in which we bring people in to fill in on an as-needed basis, whether that be short-term or long-term. Sometimes we might have a crossing guard who's injured, or on maternity, or whatever rights that they have. I'm, you know, I'm all for that. All I'm saying is that we can't, under this budget, in these budget circumstances, afford to have four FTEs, which is, which is a lot, because a crossing guard who isn't in this capacity was a point four, I think. So it's two and a half times what we're paying someone on a corner, who's on a corner every day. And it's, they're not big-ticket items in and of themselves, they're important positions, I get that, but it's fifty-six thousand dollars. And, and I think we can work out a system where we have substitute crossing guards, if you will, just like we have substitute teachers.
Thank you. Mrs. Cough?
Thank you. No, I agree, I just need some reassurance that, similar to the way we call in subs for our classroom, that we're able to reach somebody in time to get to those crosswalks just for the, the safety reason. So there needs to be another method, there needs to be something in place where, I agree, maybe they're not sitting at the police station, but I just need to know how we're going to make sure that crosswalk is covered, a different subway.
Let me work on that for tomorrow night's meeting, and I will give you that information tomorrow night, I will talk to detectives and get you that information, how exactly that works, and I kind of have a plan in my head. And I will bring back tomorrow night, to tomorrow night's meeting.
Okay, so that would be up to you.
No, so I can withdraw the motion, and we can take it up tomorrow.
All right, we'll put that on hold till tomorrow night. Actually, on the topic, Mr. Olympia?
No, no, actually, it's out.
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, so do we have any, through the chair, to Mr. Farrell, any additional information on the crossing guard coordinator?
No, you don't.
So I'm going to make a motion to eliminate line two, is it two thousand, twenty thousand and seven?
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Anodes. On the motion, Mrs. Cough?
I'm sorry, through the chair, Mr. Hockman, I, I have the same questions, almost similar. Now I need to know who's going to coordinate them when somebody calls out, and on top of that, how are they calling out? I, I'm sorry, I can't go with it tonight.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll withdraw it again, I'll bring it up tomorrow, I'll give you a day on this one. There's got to be a system, we got to be able to create a system, whether through the, the police liaison, or transportation absorbs it. But, yes.
I agree, I agree, I just, I need to answer before I go with it.
Withdrawn, for tonight.
Back on tomorrow.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hockman? So going through list A from the superintendent, and I think there are a couple of versions of this, I'm going to go off the one that we got, we received, excuse me, on April thirtieth, which was the original, for those who.
The bigger printed one?
The larger printed one, three pages, I think. So Ms. Murtagh, excuse me, Superintendent Murtagh, on page two identified two point zero FTEs custodians for consideration for reduction. I'm going to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent with regard to two point zero FTEs for custodians.
We have the motion made by Mr. Hockman. We have a second. Mr. Anodes makes a second. On the motion, Mr. Olympia?
Yes, through the chair. So with that said, I brought this up the other night, the eight custodians at night at the high school. You know, we're, enrollment's down a little bit, I mean, and we're, again, we're cutting reading specialists and in-classroom support. I mean, I really would like to consider maybe eliminating one. I mean, I really would like to consider maybe eliminating one night custodian position at the high school. I know Ms. Dunn's not a big fan of that, but unless somebody can explain to me further, you know, that we absolutely need eight, I would think that at $52,000, that could be something we could consider.
On the motion, yep, the superintendent?
Okay, so, the two that we have in here?
Yep.
Are, one is a retirement?
Yep.
And one would be one that is split between Carol and the Brown?
Yep.
And a night custodian here?
Yeah.
We do need to do some shifting within the district.
Okay.
So, perhaps shifting someone from here down to another school.
Okay.
So, we'll be doing some shifting.
Okay, all right. That's fine.
Mr. Hockman, through you to Mr. Olympia. Are you suggesting 3.0 FTEs?
That's, that was, that's what I was suggesting.
Ms. Murtagh? I'm going to amend my motion to include the reduction of 3.0 FTEs in the custodial lines.
I would feel very comfortable with two, three.
I'll go back to two. We're going to revisit this at some point before we talk about some other...
Two, definitely.
Is that okay, Mrs. Murtagh?
Yep.
All right, why don't we keep the motion at two for now? Hold that for further discussion. Add topic for the discussion. Motion is in front of us, made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. On the motion, Ms. Dunn, then Mr. Amico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I would like to say is, as far as the reduction, I believe that, honestly, I think that the proper thing for us to do, if we reduce two, is just to reduce two in the whole staff and then request that the district realign the placement of the custodians going through and deciding which custodians to cut. It, in one way, it defeats the purpose of a cut as well as it's forcing us to make a policy decision. You're, you're making the school committee decide to close two elementary schools at a different hour by telling us you want to cut an elementary school custodian, because those schools are used for after-school activities and meetings and such. And when that was implemented, the reason that those custodians were included in the budget was to care for the more involved systems, the heating and the airflow and everything, and to care for the buildings because of their size. So, I think that if you, if you're going to cut custodians, then there does need to be some type of an alignment, a realignment, and it needs to come back to the school committee because that would be the more proper way to do it.
Mr. Amico?
Thank you, through the chair of the committee. I was actually going to mention some sort of realignment to cut the two, but then give the discussions to the superintendent and also to the school committee to see where indeed we can move those custodians if need be.
So, the motion is in front of us. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
And to part of Ms. Dunn's point, there are valuable programs that take place in elementary schools that may be impacted by this. Some of those programs are parks and recreation programs, and maybe parks and recreation needs to visit the possibility of funding some of that expense. In a better world, we wouldn't be considering this.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, sort of right, right on that page, I have a question about the reduction of four FTE elementary school teachers. Is that based on enrollment?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm going to make a motion that we cut four FTE elementary school teachers.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Any discussion?
And could I just add, based on enrollment? Cutting it based on...
On the... Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't think we voted on this. We talked about it, I think, at a previous meeting, but the technology integration specialist, the administrative's unit or section, whatever. This was a position that was created but never filled. There's no body there, there's no, make a motion to follow the recommendation with the reduction of the technology integration specialist.
Second. Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. Any discussion? Hearing that, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Yeah, sure, where, what is it?
It's at the elementary level. The technology integration specialist is the...
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. I understand, we did talk a little bit about the kindergarten coordinator who are current. Staff member who's filling that position wonderfully is set to retire in December. I'll make, I'm willing to make the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation if sometime in the fall, we revisit how, or you can please provide us with some detail as to how this will be handled. And we may need to, I may wish to revisit this in terms of staffing, depending upon what that looks like, but at least for the purposes of the budget, as we're formulating it now, I'm going to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent to reduce the kindergarten coordinator post-retirement. Is that what we're, so is it 0.4 FTE that we're, or how are we?
So, what's her position in December? So, she will be, let me do it as a 0.4?
Mr. Leflore, do you have a...
Well, you're just eliminating the FTE when she retires, so it's still a 1.0 until now.
So, you know, you know what that means when we make this motion?
Yes.
Say, half the year?
Yes, okay. So, move.
Second. Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. On the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I will support this only because I want to make sure that Ms. Murphy stays in her position until the end of December. The way it's written here, it's different than the first report we got. So, I'd like you to check that figure as well, because as far as reducing the budget, you're reducing an expenditure from January to next June.
Correct.
And I want to make sure that that position is kept in the budget for FY '19, and it will be ending in December.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Mr. Hockman?
I think to that point too, I want, I want to see this, this line in the budget. I want it placed out.
Yep.
I don't, okay?
That makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. Can we talk about the district-wide? You have proposed eight pares. Is that number still correct at eight district-wide? I think we were going to look and see if that...
We're aiming toward eight. I have five completely right now, and we're still working with the middle school, high school, but we believe we can get to eight. So, that would be a recommendation.
So, this is district-wide pares, is there not any of the pares that are identified in other...
Correct.
Make the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation of the reduction of eight district-wide pares at 200,000.
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Cappenter, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Discussion? Hearing that, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the spirit of Mr. Olympia's suggestion of if we make a cut to suggest, you know, what else, we're going to give up on it, I would like to make a motion that we keep elementary extracurricula, intramurals, and extracurriculars that are listed on list A, and that we reduce the overall budget on the supply line by $43,225. I have no preference on how the supplies are reduced, but I would ask that they be reduced by that amount of money, K to 12, and that the extracurricular, intramurals, and other extracurriculars be kept in the budget. So, move.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mrs. Cappenter. On the motion, Mr. Amico?
Through the committee, to, through the chair of the committee, I'd probably vote against that. I don't think I want to touch the supplies at this point.
Mr. Hockman?
Again, through the chair to Ms. Dunn, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Amico. I think if we take up the first part of your motion, I think that I can support that. And we can, we have a little time left. I don't think we're going to wrap this up tonight, so we could, we could look as to where we could maybe offset that expense, you know, within the next couple of nights, maybe.
Okay, I'll withdraw the motion. The reason I put it in there is because I think those are important. The extracurricular, the intramurals, and extracurricular are very important for the students.
Yeah, no. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Hockman?
No, Ms. Dunn, I'm suggesting, make that motion. Let's take that off the table.
Oh, okay.
Make the motion to take that off the table, but the second part of your motion, which was where to fund it, let's, we have a little time to figure that out, is what I'm saying.
I, I'll do that too, because I would like to maintain those programs, so I'd like to take, take them on.
Through the... Mrs. Dunn, again, under...
It's under non-staff.
Non-staff, yeah. Which ones are you proposing?
It's the last three under non-staff. It's elementary, extracurricular, intramurals at the Higgins, and extracurriculars at the Higgins.
So, 32, 31, 2...
31, 2, 8,400, and 11, 625.
51, 225.
The only thing, if, if there's no objection on this, I'd like to be heard. You know, there's, you know, I coached basketball in the, for the elementary schools the last few years, and we get a, a very small stipend, $650. I don't think anybody coaches for the stipend. In fact, you know, I think...
No, they put it right back into the...
The coaches are just, yeah, we buy pizza, it's a big pizza party, do things at the end of the year. So, you know, there might be some of that where, you know, potentially, we can reduce some money. I agree with the overall concept that you're, or the overall philosophy, but I think there's probably some money that can be reduced in those nine items. Again, you know, dads and moms are coaching the intramurals just to be with their kids and with their friends, and $650 stipend, $1,300 per school, eight schools, what's that, 91,000, whatever it is. I mean, that's not, you know, I think money could be spent better elsewhere. Mr. Hockman?
You know, Ms. Mayor, we both coached.
You do the same thing?
We do. No, we don't take the money, or it goes back to the kids, whether it be to a pizza party, or sweatshirts, or, you know, but there's, there are certain things that are fundamentally puberty. And some of these programs are fundamentally puberty, and kids need to be kids, and, yeah, we can, we can spend the money on tier-two specialists, and we can spend the money on other stuff. I think maybe just as a committee's recognition as to there's certain lines we won't cross. And for me, that's why I take this motion as being, and I don't disagree with the mayor either, that we may be able to manipulate this slightly and maybe we look at it another day, but I, I couldn't vote, and I don't think my, you know, my committee members here could vote to just eliminate these fundamentally puberty programs that kids that have grown up through here, here for decades and decades have participated in. And I think that's really what we're saying here, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. I understand. Mr. Amico, then Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, through the chair of the committee. I'll support keeping that, obviously, on the table. Maybe readjusting some of those stipends, we could do that, maybe tailing down a little bit. But my whole part was cutting the supplies. I don't want to cut the supplies. If we could take that off the table, I obviously would support it.
And honestly, the reason that I did bring that through, and what I would like to see is, I think for a lot of those programs at the elementary and the middle school, the kids who participate in those are not necessarily the kids who go to a lot of other things. And for many of them, the activities at school, after school, are the only ones that they do participate in. And the teachers, I know at the Higgins level, the teachers who do those after-school clubs really does enrich the life of the children that participate. And definitely, the stipend goes back into the program because they buy supplies, and, you know, the coaches buy all the supplies for the sports. But being able to participate in something that's fun and enjoyable, and they get to, they're able to pursue an interest that they may have just found out about, I think that that's really a very enriching thing, and especially for students who can't go to other more costly programs or more costly sports leagues. So, that's, that's the basis behind my motion. So, I will make a new motion that we take off the table the elementary extracurricular, intramurals, and extracurriculars at the Higgins, that they shall not be cut. So, move.
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll call vote. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Just for clarification, are you, are we still talking about the three items?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Does the committee recall, did we vote on the proposal by Superintendent Murtagh on the 141,000? Did we vote on that?
Minus the...
16,000.
Yeah, it was originally, I was thinking 157.
Yeah.
Oh, we held the volleyball. So, it was 136, 75.
So, we can take a vote. Thank you.
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you. So, we're still on list A. There's consideration here, the elementary slash Higgins middle school teacher at 0.5 FTEs?
That's what the department head, if we eliminate the department head at the elementary K5 health and PE and 612 health PE, they go back into the classrooms and...
Okay. So, while we're talking about that, you have three department heads stipends recommended on list A. Which departments?
Here, here at the high school part, and then the visiting...
I got you. Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent with the reduction of three department heads stipends.
Second. Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll, any...